...Street Elementary School to introduce our inspirational members.
Good evening Chairman, Superintendent Autry, and members of the Board of Education. It is my extreme honor to introduce two of our outstanding students at High Street Elementary, Macy Gutierrez and Vadim Patraschko. Both of them in the fall were elected to be the representatives of the fifth grade class and tonight they would like to read to you a poem about Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in honor of the observance of his birthday as well as his contributions to our country.
You faced injustice, hate and strife. You fought for what should be, you risked and finally gave your life. So others could be free, you could have waited, but you chose to love and understand, rejecting violence to exclude evil in our land. You've not inflamed, but still inspired with holes that wouldn't yield. You called for boycotts, not for fire. With faith you're only shield. You march in protest for the poor of every shade and hue. You've so many hardships you endured for those who needed you. You stirred a nation's heart and mind. Your message still is clear. The color is not how we define, your memory is always new. Each year your birthday holiday, the nation honors you. And wonders when will see the day your dream at last comes true.
Next on the agenda, Vice Chair will lead us to the pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, and invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next we have the adoption of the agenda. We have a sense to review it. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Ms. Shaw, let's motion to adopt it. It's brought to our floor. All in place, ready to do. Six, four, seven, four, zero, one, five. Next we have a school presentation presented by Principal Frank Daniels. He is the principal of Open Campus.
Thank you. Good evening Superintendent Autry, Chairman McBrayer, members of the Board. Pleased to be here tonight with you. At Open Campus, like all schools in Rockdale County, we look for ways to provide training and learning opportunities that extend beyond the classroom. One way that we've done this the past few years is our Lunch and Learn Series. The Lunch and Learn Series is truly a collaborative effort between our school and business and community members. I'm proud to have Tammy Maddox, the teacher sponsor of the program here tonight, to share some of the information about this learning opportunity for our students. Ms. Maddox has been a business ed teacher for nineteen years in Rockdale County, the past five at Open Campus. In addition to her duties as the business education teacher, she's in charge of work-based learning, our school store, and our student interns. Ms. Tammy Maddox.
Good evening everyone. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to showcase the Open Campus. And let me just say, if Mr. Daniels had told me I had to actually stand at the podium and speak into the mic, I would have had to go home early to meet the snow. But as he pointed out, it is a collaborative effort. If you will notice at the-- oh, I'm sorry. Now how did he-- oh, there we go. Okay. At the bottom of the screen, it says that it's sponsored by the Rockdale Open Campus CTA advisory committee. Lisa Blocker is a business education teacher at Open Campus as well. She teaches the administrative information support pathway to students. I teach the small business development pathway. Part of our duties require that we have an advisory committee and that advisory committee's purpose is to help us meet the needs of our students. The Lunch and Learn Program is one way that we do that. As we met in 2011 before school started to kind of get our year together and prepare what we wanted to do for students, we were talking about ways to get our students to actually take ownership of their education, find their niche, find something beyond the classroom that would help them, you know, play the game of school, as Mr. Robert Preswell used to say. And, you know, within the course of our school day at the Open Campus, we go to school for ten hours. And their largest block of time is lunch, which is forty-five minutes. That's non-instructional time. We definitely didn't want to take away from the instructional time. So as we sat there and talked about what we could do, literally through divine intervention, I remembered seeing an advertisement about brown bag sessions. Bring your lunch and come here. And it was something either UGA or maybe Gainesville College offered. And I threw that out there on the table and everybody said, you know, that's a good idea. That is definitely something that would reach students. But we knew that to be successful, it needed two qualities. The topics had to be enticing and we had to feed them because if you feed them, they will come. You can see very quickly and briefly from this list of our advisory committee members, we have a great mix of members from the business community, from the secondary community, which is basically Open Campus, and then Roger Ivy and Jeff Rogers from the Career Academy. And we also have members from the post-secondary arena because we hope all of our students will eventually pursue that avenue. I will get this in just a moment, I promise. Now, the goal of our program is to give students the opportunity beyond the classroom to develop as young professionals so that they already take with them ammunition to be successful beyond high school. Some of the rewards that they get, they get to speak with industry experts, helping them professionally. They also get to expand their network. One of the things that we thought would make the program a success is if we offered field trips. So what we came up with the criteria for field trips is this. If students attend three series, three sessions in a particular series, and we have an appropriate field trip to go with it, you are eligible to attend. With the exception of one field trip, all the field trips had been funded completely and on the particular one, and when we get to that, I'll tell you which one it is, all students had to purchase was their lunch. So that has been highly successful. Out of our students at the Open Campus, ninety-four students, different students have attended a Lunch and Learn presentation and sixty-seven have participated in the field trip. So we feel like it has gotten off to a great start for our student. Okay. Some of the topics that we've had, if-- and I'm sorry, I left my glasses in the car because I thought it was going to be over at the screen like I am in the classroom. We have different series, some preparation for college, some about the workplace. We also have some series that are for personal growth as well because again, it has to be enticing. One of our series, Judge Nancy Beal spoke on teen dating violence and then we followed up with basic self-defense and a personal safety plan. In our college series, we had some students that were graduates from the Open Campus to come back and tell our students, once you get to college, what do you actually have to do to safeguard it? So we've had some very interesting topics and our students, you know, it's every day. What is the next Lunch and Learn? What is the next Lunch and Learn? These are some pictures from some of our sessions that we've had, some of our speakers. At the top, we have Albert Lewis from the Department of Labor. He spoke to our students, your image and your brand. He brought up a very important point that it's not so much anymore who you know, it's who knows you and what they know about you. Because as you expand your arena, your world gets smaller and more people know you. Then we have Renee Roman from Chucky Chi. She is one of my work-based learning associates. She actually spoke to our students about when you come in for an interview with her, this is what you can expect and it basically is what they can expect with any part-time employer. And then at the bottom, we have Chip Chappell from O'Charley's. He came in and he spoke to our students about careers in the restaurant industry. So those are just a few photos from our session. Now our field trips, we, last year, we took students on a joint field trip to Georgia Perimeter College and Georgia Piedmont Technical College. We did this in conjunction with Jeff Rogers Work-Based Learning Program at RCA. And this is the one where the students actually had to buy their lunch. Everything else was funded for the students. We also took students to a field trip at the Electrical Training Center. I'm not sure if you all are familiar with what that is, but the Electrical Contractors Association of Atlanta built a school so that they could train their own apprentice electricians to work for them. And Harold Danforth with Buckington Burns is one of our greatest benefactors and he helped us set up this field trip. The students actually got to go, they went through the classrooms, they told them what to expect from the program. I mean, basically, if you pass your test and you interview with a contractor, if you get hired, you have a job right there. And then you go to class once every two weeks. And within five years, you had, if you successfully completed everything, you are an electrician. And what they told us there is they could expect a salary in excess of sixty thousand a year after five years out of high school. So this was another excellent field trip for our students to see just different options beyond high school, their post-secondary. Our last field trip, we took to Westwood College. We had taken them to a traditional technical college, a traditional college, and through an industry training program. We wanted to take them to a non-traditional college because for some students, that works better. And Westwood actually funded that trip and lunch for us. That's just the page of some of our sponsors. Some of our sponsors have donated food. Some of our sponsors have given us a discount. Some have donated money. Some have donated speakers and lunch. Everybody has been a huge contributor to the success of our program. And without these individuals, we certainly could not do what we can. Because when all else fails, we have to rely on the OC shortstop. That is our school-based enterprise, our school store, which is part of the Small Business Development Pathway. It is student-run by our student interns, teacher facilitated, and all the proceeds from the store go to support our student recognition programs and the Lunch and Learn Series. And unfortunately, when we provide lunch, it's pizza and chips and cookies usually. But we also help fund the field trips and what I like about it is the students participate, the students purchase, the students get the benefits, and it's just helping everybody grow. And our upcoming plans, we hope to continue our field trips. This spring, we're looking at a field trip maybe to Georgia Gwinnett College and Gwinnett Technical College, maybe a field trip again to Georgia Perimeter and Georgia Piedmont. And if we don't go back to the Electrical Training Center, we may try another type of apprentice program. We're also have these topics listed for other sessions that we want to have at lunch, especially the one about identity theft, because as they go off to post-secondary, you live off your social security number. And that's the thing that you have to protect. And we want to, you know, definitely have a session about that and some other post-graduation preparation activities. Again, we have to keep the topics enticing and it's not just about professional, but it's also about personal growth for these students because we want them to leave high school as well-rounded individuals, ready to make that next step. Any questions? If anyone would like to speak or help us, we welcome all support. Thank you again for allowing us this opportunity. Hope I didn't speak too fast.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maddox. I had the pleasure of teaching with Ms. Maddox probably too many years, but very, very good teacher. We appreciate what Mr. Daniels and Ms. Maddox are able to do at Open Campus. Next on the agenda is we have the presentation to the board and the public by Ms. Cindy Ball.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Superintendent, thank you for joining me up front. We have a great crowd tonight, although we are missing a few people amongst this group. Probably the weather keeping them away, but we will move forward. And because we have a large group, I'm going to keep it easy and go in alphabetical order. We have two schools represented here tonight. We have Peaks Chapel Elementary and we have Flat Shoals Elementary. Now why are they here? In 1969, Colorado's PTA President Mary Lou Anderson developed the first Reflections Program to encourage students to explore their talents and express themselves by giving positive recognition for their artistic efforts. Since that time, millions of students have benefited. The program is designed to enhance quality arts education for students in pre-K through twelfth grade. As participants in the program, students are encouraged to create works in the following art categories: dance choreography, film production, literature, musical composition, photography, and visual arts. Students submit artwork to local PTAs. Works are judged by local PTAs and the winning entries advance to the council level for judging. Top entries from each state PTA Reflections contest advance to the national level for final round of judging. In 2012, the national PTA launched the Special Artist Division, a non-graded division limited to students whose physical, cognitive, or mental health challenges meet the American Disabilities Act guidelines. Each year, there's a contest to come up with the theme and the 2012-13 Reflections theme is "The Magic of a Moment." Tonight, we congratulate our Rockdale County Reflections winners from Flat Shoals Elementary and Peaks Chapel Elementary. We also extend our appreciation to all of the Rockdale PTA officers and members who work hard to support this program for our schools and our students. And we will begin with our students from Peaks Chapel Elementary. So students from Peaks Chapel, what I'm going to do is call everybody, since it's a fairly manageable-sized group, we'll bring everyone from Peaks Chapel up and then feel weighed up here for all of Peaks Chapel students and we'll just take a group photo before we move on to Flat Shoals. Our first student from Peaks Chapel Elementary, Darrell Dawson, first grade in recognition of winning in musical composition and visual arts. Mahat Dawson, pre-K in recognition of winning in visual arts. Caleb Dixon, third grade, winner in photography. Is Malik here? I don't think Malik made it tonight, okay? Tori Johnson, fifth grade, also winner in photography. Malcolm Lowe, fifth grade, winner in musical composition. Joseph Monroe, fifth grade, winner in film production. And Madeline Smith, fifth grade, also winner in photography. That completes our Peaks Chapel group. And Peaks Chapel parents, you're welcome to come up behind me and I'm going to get everybody set and you can just take pictures and flow back to your seats. Okay, let's see. If we can have me come up to this top step. Guys, come on down. And then come up to the front step. Joseph, if you'll come on up to him and then. Madeline, let's have you come right back here for him. Mr. Superintendent, here, just kind of close on the end here. And I should thank the-- Okay, but you can't hold your certificate over your face. There you go. There you go. Everybody got it? Okay, let me move those parents and then you can take all the photos you'd like. You guys smile big. Oh, you guys aren't smiling. I can see smiles, but-- And you have to hold it for me. Okay, one more. Okay, really big smiles from my team. Ready? One, two, and three. Congratulations. Okay, and our Flat Shoals group is going to be a little bit bigger, but I still think we can get everybody up here and then do a group photo because we have the best students in the world and they can pose nice and follow directions and I think we'll be just fine. So we're going to move forward with Flat Shoals Elementary. And I don't believe Nia Bennett is here. Nia, did you sneak in? No, okay. Dancy Voice, fourth grade, PTA Reflections winner in literature. And I don't think Trevor Brown. Trevor Brown? No, okay. Jemaya Carter, first grade, winner in literature and photography. Samaya Chance, winner in visual arts. My second grade. Lauren Chapman, third grade, winner in literature. And Cameron Coleman. Is Cameron here? Cameron sneak in? No, okay. Nathan Krabs, third grade, winner in musical composition and photography. Auburn Culver, fifth grade, winner in visual arts. Gabrielle Dieter, fifth grade, winner in visual arts. Savannah Dieter, first grade, also winner in visual arts. And I don't think Kasara Dixon. I don't think-- Terrica, I don't think Terrica made it tonight. Jeremiah Jackson. Did Jeremiah make it? Okay. Zachariah Johnson, first grade, winner in photography. Atasia Jones. Did Atasia make it? Okay. Kenji Jones, second grade, winner in literature. Jarvis Lane, fourth grade, also winner in literature. Skylah Lowman. Did Skylah make it in? Okay. Janice Marklin. Did Janice make it? Martin Millsaps, fourth grade, winner in visual arts. Jordan Nixon, third grade, winner in visual arts. Felix Redmond. Did Felix make it? Maya Rolland, fifth grade, winner in literature. Darren Ross. Darren is a Kindergartner Special Artist, winner in visual arts. Derek Shockley, fifth grade, winner in literature. Rebecca Sumlin. Rebecca is second grade, Special Artist, winner in visual arts. Sierra Thomas, first grade, winner in literature. Rihanna Tyson, fourth grade, winner in photography. And finishing up for Flat Shoals, although I do think we have some students who joined us and we'll catch up with you in just a minute. Darren Wallace, second grade, winner in literature. Okay, this is our Flat Shoals group. And then we'll bring Miracle up. So let me-- Oh, you guys already-- Who did that? Somebody on the front row here said you--
Everyone.
All right, okay. Great. Okay. Let's have, if you guys will come move now. Everybody needs to come shoulder to shoulder. Can we do that? Everybody come shoulder to shoulder?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm going to have you, can you come out? Can you, one step forward, okay? Okay, Samaya, can you come down here? Okay. How about, let's see, Lauren, can you come down here? All right, now, everybody in the middle row, come on in and close our gap here. How about that? Okay? And Rebecca, right here, how about that? And down one step, one step. There you go. Okay? All right, and all you on the back row, here's what I'd like for you to do. Take a little step forward, so you're a little bit closer to the second row, okay? Okay, how about that? How are we doing, parents? Looking okay? Okay, nobody can hold their certificate in front of their face, or their friend's face. Okay? Let me get this out of the way. Big smiles, everybody. How are we doing, guys? Ready, parents? All right, one more second. I still have to get mine. And you're good. Well, we can put our, let's see. Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, would you go up behind the flasher? That might help get you guys in the picture a little bit. And make sure you guys are all shoulder to shoulder, okay? Great job, guys. Keep those smiles going. Wait, one more, my camera. All right, everybody. Great, big, giant smiles for me. On three. One, two, three. Yay, congratulations! Okay, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize Miracle Harper from Peaks Chapel Elementary, our winner in visual arts. And Miracle, you get a, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to step on you. You get a picture with our chairman, and you're going to talk all by yourself! All right, right here, Miracle, ready? One, two, three. Congratulations! That concludes my recognition for tonight.
Let's take about a five-minute recess so we can congratulate all the awards winners tonight. How about that?